Welcome to the Clark Township Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, July 10th, 2025. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by mailing the annual schedule of meetings to the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, Union County Hawk, and Tappan to Clark by posting such annual meeting schedule on the bulletin board in Town Hall reserved for such announcements, and by the proper filing of said notice with the township clerk. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must always be maintained. I will do roll call. Mayor Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Ulrich?
Here.
Councilman Menity? Mr. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Triola?
Here.
Mr. Altman?
Here.
Mr. Steinberg?
Here.
Mr. Pericato?
Here.
Mr. Oranzio?
Here.
Mr. Gribb?
Here.
Mr. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Ricky?
Here.
Okay. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, and to the people, liberty, and justice for all.
As everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our June 5th, 2025 meeting, any comments, changes, modifications? Hearing none, I make a motion to approve those minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Correspondence. All correspondence is available at Town Hall for the public purview. As such, I make a motion to dispense of the reading of the correspondence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Site plan application. Dish of Management LLC, 211 Westfield Avenue, Block 77, Lot 10. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I've had an opportunity to review the legal notice and affidavit of service and find that both are appropriate and that the board has jurisdiction to proceed and hear this application. With that said, you can call the applicant.
Good evening, board. Good evening. My name is Trevor Endler, on behalf of the applicant Dish of Management from the law firm Javverbound Wargast, and I want to just thank you for your time. For we are here for preliminary and final site plan approvals with bulk C variances for the property at 211, yeah, 211 Westfield Avenue, Block 77, Lot 10. The site is inside of the DTV district, and the proposed use is a childcare center. Currently, there is a two-and-a-half-story building that used to be a funeral home. The plan for this application is to demolish the funeral home and to build a new two-story daycare center that includes a fenced-in playground and an updated parking. At this time, I would like to call my first witness, Cheryl Schweiker, our architect.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cheryl Schweiker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth.
That I will tell the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
In this proceeding.
In this proceeding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
State your name again, spell it, and your address.
Sure. It's Cheryl, C-H-E-R-Y-L, Schweiker, S-C-H-W-E-I-K-E-R. Business address, 42 Ockner Parkway, Livingston, New Jersey.
Before you start, would you please summarize the variances that you are seeking?
The main variance that we are seeking is the minimum amount of setback on both roads. It is hardly 21 and 1/2 feet, but it is a proposed 20 feet. And then, addition, Mr. Ritchie had indicated the double frontage lots, the fact that the backside of the property runs onto a residential street, the setback, the accessory structure of the use because of the double front yards that Mr. Ritchie was saying is the playground would be technically in the front yard, the building in the rear yard of the building because the proposed structure will have some frontage on it. It's not, uh, do you want to go with the microphone?
What are you saying?
Okay. Okay, same. So as I was saying, the proposed building has frontage on Westfield Avenue, and then the backside of the property is on Plymouth, and Plymouth is a residential area. And so because of that, Mr. Ritchie has indicated that both the rear and front yard count as front yards according to the ordinance. So that's why the front yard setback on Plymouth, even though when you look at the plans, it'll be a rear yard, because of it being a residential road, it technically counts as a front yard. And then additionally, there is a proposed six-foot fence along Plymouth Road, which is solid, which is not allowed in residential areas. And then there's also landscaping, screening variances.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, when you first said it's Section 195, 123, 2.51, it's supposed to be a separate road where it's serving the functionally proposed as a rear yard. Is it a front yard? Because you're using that for an accessory outdoor play area, that type of use is not contemplated in the front yard, and you require variance relief for that.
Understood.
You began by saying that, but I don't think you concluded by saying that. Just wanted to clarify. And you eliminated your variance for the LED sign, correct?
Correct. Correct. There is no longer a proposed LED sign on the property.
Okay. And regarding the fence, right, because what we're really talking about there, just to clarify, is that the fence that's out there today ranges from four to six feet in its opaque, but you're looking to extend that to six feet continuously. So that's what the delta is, to add two feet of opaque fence to the existing fence, I believe, is the variance.
Correct.
Okay. I think we're all in agreement.
Okay. Ms. Schweiker, if you could please just briefly go over your credentials?
Sure. I'm going to qualify my credentials as the architect and also childcare operations. So I am a 2001 graduate of NJIT with my Bachelor's of Architecture license in the state of New Jersey since 2017, and my license is active and good standing. Our firm has designed close to 500 childcare centers across the nation, so we're very well-versed in the operations of these types of centers.
I make a motion to approve the witness.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May continue.
Thank you.
If you want to start with the operational information?
Sure. So I'm going to, my testimony will cross between architecture and the operations of the building, because they kind of go hand in hand. So I'll talk about a little bit of the floor plan, and then I'll get into the design of the exterior. So the facility is, will be licensed by the state of New Jersey to operate. They cannot operate without the state coming and inspecting the facility, so I just wanted to make that clear, that based on building approvals and permits issued, they also need the approval from the state, which will happen after the building is constructed and they obtain a certificate of occupancy. So in a daily operation, a parent will park, walk their child into the center through a secure vestibule, check their child in, walk them to the classroom, leave them, and then leave the building. The traffic engineer will talk more about turnovers and length of time, about how this works, but that's the essential part of how the parents operate the facility. There's no curbside drop-off. So the building on the first floor is comprised of classrooms for infants and toddlers. They are required to be on the ground floor. Children under the age of two and a half cannot be on the second floor. So our functions on the first floor are limited to those age groups. And then there are some accessory spaces for the staff, mechanical spaces, other admin spaces. Moving to the-
You're referring to the floor plan?
The floor plan, yes.
And just identify what that is.
Yes. SA 1.1.
And what is it?
The proposed floor plan.
And the floor plans, the first and second floor mirror each other?
Yes, they do stack each other. There is no difference in floor area between the two floors. They do stack.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Within the facility, there are two egress stairs and an elevator. All spaces will be designed to be barrier-free compliant. So the second floor, we have classrooms for older children above the age of two and a half. These facilities, we find, they are mostly for children from the age of six weeks to six years, and it's a typical daycare center operations of those age groups. So a little bit about the building itself. It will be sprinkled. There will be a fire alarm. It will have all the safety criteria that were required by building code. Currently, we're showing an occupancy of 198 children for both floors, and approximately 27 staff members, which includes administrative. On the floor plan, or the site plan, the civil engineer will show the playground in the back, talk about the fencing, but there is a playground in the rear and to the side of the building, which is accessed through a side exit door. So each classroom will also have the necessary exits required by building code. The classrooms on the ground floor will have egress exits, exiting directly to the outside, which is a safety requirement for this institutional use. They will also be doing fire drills and working with your local first responders, and coordinating any emergency activities that needs to take place as well. Okay. So I'm going to switch to the elevations, which is-
All right, so that I neglected to identify that a little bit further. That would be A1, the floor plan. This will be A2.
Sure.
And just identify it again.
Yes, this is drawing SA-1.2, proposed elevations. So the building has been designed with some colonial-type architectural features. We have a mansard roof, which will have a recessed well in it where all the mechanical equipment will be housed, so it will be screened from view. You will not see any of that equipment. We have some traditional materials on the building, siding, brick, stone, a combination of those materials to help define and, excuse me, break up the scale of the building between the two floors. Typical asphalt shingle roof. We have some decorative gables in there. Standard vinyl windows. They do not open. They are non-operable. That's a safety feature for the building. And then the entranceway will be, have a covered canopy, so as parents bring in their children, they're protected from the weather. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
If I could just start. You had mentioned the age range of children inside the childcare. The intention of this childcare is to have no children under the age of 18 months. Is that correct?
Typically, the license is issued starting at six weeks, but it's up to the operator, depending on their demand, what type of enrollments that they see, what the age groups that they'll house, but the license covers all of those age groups.
And then could you also just briefly touch on the signage that we had mentioned?
Oh, yes.
The LED sign was removed, but can you mention what signage will be on the building?
Right. So we've identified an area on the front of the building for signage. We anticipate to comply with any local ordinances in terms of the size and lighting of the sign that's going to be shown on the front elevation.
And then you had also mentioned the playground in the rear of the building. Can you just describe sort of how that is meant to be laid out, if you can?
Sure. So the playground will be surrounded by a six-foot-tall fence for the privacy and security of the children, and there'll be various equipment in that playground. The state does inspect the equipment that's used, and it has to be appropriate for the age of the child using it. So it will be approved by the state to use.
And then last question from me. Is there a typical, this may be more suited for the applicant themselves, but do you have an idea of the hours of operation that this facility will operate on?
Sure. So typically, we see these operations starting somewhere between 6:30 and 7:00, and closing around those hours in the evening, 6:00, 6:30, to allow parents time before or after work to drop off and pick up their children.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
Did you evaluate the repurposing or reuse of the existing structure?
No, that was not a request of us for this particular application.
Could it have been used?
I'm not, without evaluating it, I can't answer that question.
The truth is for you, but that's, property is in our COA overlay zone, meant for affordable housing. I guess you'll be contributing to the fund.
I'm not, I can't answer that question.
Question?
That property is in our COA overlay zone. Any new construction there, it was intended for affordable housing. Just curious, since you're not putting housing in, are you going, I guess you'll be contributing to our fund?
As a commercial development, you will be paying the non-residential affordable housing development fee.
Yeah.
And that will be a condition of approval if the board is so inclined.
Understood.
I have no questions. Anyone else on the board have any questions? To the witness?
The back of the building, is there any access from the sides, from the back street for parents to come in, or anybody to breach that fence? Is it just a solid fence that cannot be, and is there any way for the kids to, if they can't get back into the building, can they get out of that property?
Sure. So the playground will have egress gates on it, which are required per code, but they typically have alarms on them, so if they are opened, a teacher is alerted. The children, once they enter the facility, they don't leave it. So they enter the playground from inside the building. They don't leave a secure facility once they're there. So parents come in, use the front door, and they use the side door for access to the playground.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just say one thing. It's my understanding that there is an active gate there today, so maybe the site engineer can address whether that gate will be removed as part of this plan moving forward.
Yes, he can answer those questions.
Seeing no other questions, I'd like to open up this witness to the public for any questions regarding her testimony, and her testimony only. If you have general comments, that can be heard at the end of this application. I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Mike. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward? Seeing none, I make a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to bring up our engineer, Scott Lovrich.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Scott Lovrich.
I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth.
That I will tell the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
In this proceeding.
In this proceeding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would state your name again, spell it, and your address.
My name is Scott Lovrich, S-C-O-T-T-L-O-V-S-N-VICTOR-E-R-I-C-H. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology.
I wish to approve.
I've been-
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Just move to these.
The plans that I'm going to be referencing here were last revised on May 14th, 2024, sorry, 2025. They are the site plan set, preliminary and final site plan set.
And they were prepared by your office or you?
Prepared by, under my direct supervision, correct.
The site plan will be A3. And if you change pages, just let the board know what page you're referring to?
Of course.
Is there an operator, and perhaps this question is not for you, but have you, do you have a designated operator for this facility?
It's not a question for me, per se. I might have to-
Okay, that's fine. Just address that as we go along.
Yeah, will do. Okay. Thank you. So I will start with just briefly describing the existing conditions of the site. It's Block 77, referring to the cover sheet here, which shows a key map of the area. Block 77, Lot 10, in the township of Clark. The area of the site is 34,403 square, .43 square feet or .79 acres. It's located in your DVT Downtown Village District. Frontage by Westfield Avenue to the north, which is County Route 613, and it has commercial uses beyond. To the south, it's bordered by Plymouth Road with, and residential uses with more residential beyond, and to the east and west by commercial uses. The, I'm going to switch to the existing conditions and demolition plan, which is Sheet 2.00 in this plan set. Briefly, the existing topography of the site generally slopes from the south to the north, the south being Plymouth Road down to the north. On this orientation of this plan, north is to the bottom of the page, south is to the top. So it generally slopes from the south to the north towards Westfield Avenue. We're proposing to demolish all the existing site elements and features, including the building, existing perimeter fencing, and drainage on-site, existing lighting, for development of our project. But currently that sits on the site is a unused funeral home with about a 3,980 square foot footprint There are existing, I do just want to touch on the existing drainage patterns. There's existing catch basins on-site. Pipes weren't shown on the survey. However, we believe that the site generally, the pattern is generally going to follow the topography, which is from the south of the site or the top of this page down to Westfield Avenue. And then I will move on to Sheet 3.00, which is our site plan, which indicates all of our proposed features on-site. So I'll start with the building, which is, as you heard, a proposed two-story daycare facility. The footprint is about 6,960 square feet, and around the perimeter of the building is going to be a walkway, a concrete walkway, minimum five foot width, with a playground about 3,000 square foot of area towards the rear. Additionally, we have 37 total on-street parking spaces, sorry, off-street parking spaces, of which two are ADA compliant, and included in those are four electric vehicle charging stations, one of which is ADA compliant in accordance with the state statutes. The site is accessed from proposed, two new proposed driveways along Westfield Avenue. Both will be one-way restricted and egress only towards the west and ingress, sorry, ingress towards the west, egress towards the east. I'm going to reserve more testimony with respect to the access to the site to our traffic engineer, my consultant colleague, Mr. Intandola. And then we also have a trash enclosure towards the south of the site, and on our site plan, we performed a vehicle-turning template with the SU-30 truck, which indicates that this truck can safely enter the site, remove the trash, and exit the site. As mentioned, we do have new fencing going around the entirety of the site. The existing gate towards Plymouth Road will be removed. There will be no gate access on that southern perimeter. There will be gates interior to our site in the rear, next to the door, and one towards the front out of the playground. We are proposing off-street improvements within the township's right-of-way to match the streetscape that was recently installed near the CVS property. So we will do the, I think it's integrally colored stamped Bowmanite-type paver material, along with decorative LED lighting, all to match the specifications of the township, and new curbing to meet the specifications of the county. As for setbacks of the building itself, the front yard to Westfield Avenue is 95.6 feet, where 25 feet is required, and to the rear, what we're calling the front yard to Plymouth Road, is at 20 feet, where 21 and 1/2 feet are required. The side yard setback at its most narrow point is 10 feet, where 10 is required, and that covers the setbacks. So I'm going to, we do also, are providing concrete wheel stops along the parking spaces fronting the building to ensure any rollover or overhang into the walkways. And we have MUTCD compliant directional striping to further ensure site safety and circulation for vehicles. I will move to Sheet 4.00, which is our proposed grading plan. The finished floor elevation of the building is approximately 80.7, and it will slope along the front of the building down towards Westfield Avenue, a little bit to the west, but ultimately, everything will be captured via proposed catch basins and routed through a basin, which I'm going to show on the next sheet. But we do have a small retaining wall along the southerly property line, which is going to have a max height of one foot. And then Sheet 5.00 is our drainage plan, which indicates the proposed catch basins on-site that will be collecting stormwater runoff generated by the parking area, and the roof leaders that will be picked up for the building area, and everything will be routed to a proposed 30-inch HDPE detention basin that is controlled by an outlet structure that will reduce runoff at a reduced controlled rate to the county system within Westfield Avenue. These, this will comply with the township's ordinance for stormwater management. It is not technically a major development per NJDEP regulations. However, we comply with the township's ordinance in providing peak runoff rate reductions and trying to, and complying with the DEP's requirements to the maximum- and trying to, and complying with the DEP's requirements to the maximum extent practical as your ordinance requires. This is Sheet 6.00, which is a utility plan. Currently, the site is serviced fully with sewer, water, gas, electric. We are going to propose new connections to the building to be coordinated with all the respective utility authorities. And we are going to field confirm the size of the sanitary main within Westfield Avenue prior to construction of the sanitary lateral to confirm the sizing. And then I will switch to a different sheet. This is a lighting plan with a revision date of June 3rd, 2025. It was submitted to the board about that time. So this is the new proposed lighting plan, which illustrates several pole-mounted area light, LED area lights that are going to have back shielding and dim controlling to reduce and eliminate any off, offsites light pollution. We have the photometrics on this plan. And there will also be proposed several wall-mounted area lights to illuminate the perimeter walkway for safety. This plan meets the minimum foot candle intensity in the borough ordinance, which is 0.5 foot candles average. In the, for the parking area, we provide an average of 2.1 foot candles. Again, these will be, will have back shielding. They will have, they will be dimmable and controllable to reduce any adverse impacts. It won't, they won't have any adverse impacts to adjacent properties. And then I will go back to the original plan set revised on May 14th to briefly go over the landscaping plan, which is proposed, where we have several shade trees proposed throughout the site and arborvitae's in each of the southeastern and western corners to provide additional screening to the landscape properties. And we do, we did note the board engineer's comment to provide additional low-level landscaping within the curb violence and along the perimeter of the parking area. We have no problem complying with that comment and providing additional landscaping. I do want to note, Westfield Avenue is a county road. We will be submitting to the county for approval and complying with any of their comments and requirements. I believe that concludes what I have for now.
Just a few, just a few questions. Question one was, I had noticed, noted in some of the reviews, the questions about the EV charging parking spaces and their location. Can you just confirm that the spots will be located in the place that is safest for their location and encode with the fire requirements?
The proposed EV charging locations are along the eastern property line. There's two, and then there is two along the eastern side of the building. One of them has to be ADA compliant, and the ADA spaces have to be nearest to the building. So that, yes, these are the locations. We believe that they're safe.
And then just following up, I believe you had already said, but just to confirm, there will be wheel stops in front of all of the parking spaces that front the building?
Correct. All the parking spaces fronting the building will have concrete wheel stops.
And then you, do you have any problems following the recommendations of the review letters we had received from the town?
No, we have no issues complying with any of the outstanding comments within any of the professionals' letters we received.
I have no further questions, this witness.
Just to be clear on that, when you say review letters, the review letters we're discussing is Mr. O'Connor's Technical Review Number Two, dated May 22, 2025. The Clark Fire Chief, Fire Official Review Letter, April 11, 2025. And the Clark Police Department Review Letter of April 24, 2025. You will be complying with all of those.
That's correct.
I prepared a letter as well dated April 10th, 2025.
I was going to say that for the planner. Are, are there any comments that the site engineer needs to address in your letter?
It was just really clarification on, on, on the streetscape. The lighting was addressed, I mean, I guess he addressed the landscaping partially through Mr. O'Connor's letter. The streetscape, I mean, I was just discussing with, with Mr. O'Connor. Did you field verify that the CVS is stamped concrete or there are pavers out there?
It appears like stamped from the aerial imagery. I haven't personally walked across that.
But the point is, you're going to, you agree to comply with whatever, whether that's pavers or stamped concrete.
We're going to comply with the standards and recommendations of the township.
Lighting will match.
Correct.
Is there a reason that you didn't add any, like, at least a bench or, or some type of public amenity in that area?
There is not much right-of-way left between the back of the sidewalk and the property line. However, we could probably fit a bench there if that's the request.
What type of bench?
It would match, there's bench in CVS, right? It's, it's the established pattern that the township has selected. It would be. Let me eliminate the LED. I'm just looking here. And just so you're aware, in terms of variance, when it's discussed for the landscaping, because the landscaping, just to clarify what I discussed, was that because a portion of the rear play area is in front of the residential property, to technically meet the code, just so you're aware, with the variance is being considered, is that that landscaping is only along a portion of the residential property that it adjoins. Looking at, I don't see direction here on the plan as it's zoomed in, but looking at Plan View, the upper right portion of the plan, you have landscaping, then it stops as it gets closer to the cul-de-sac. Technically, that's what the variance is, if it wasn't clear, is for the portion between the cul-de-sac of the residential property, because there is not a continuous screen there. So I just wanted to clarify that. You said the lighting is, is now, you clarified that it's, it's back shielded, and there'll be no impacts to the neighborhood. So that's addressed. Architecture. That's, I think that's it.
So just to repeat, you will be complying with all of Mr. O'Connor's comments of April 10th, 2025, except with the comments regarding the LED sign, correct?
Correct.
And also, a condition of approval would be county planning board approval?
Yes.
Have you submitted for that yet, or you're going to submit?
We have submitted for county approval. We have not received a response yet, but we have submitted for county approval.
Okay. And a, a condition of approval is also, would be a bench consistent with what is the CVS property. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
I have no other questions, Mr. Chair.
Are you addressing traffic, or is there a traffic engineer?
We'll have a traffic, yeah, expert.
Anyone else on the board wishing to ask questions?
Quick question. Based on the shape of the lot, what was the determination of the, the layout of the building and the positioning of it? What made you put it where it is, I guess is what I'm asking?
Right. We wanted to fit enough parking spaces on-site and provide a, a, you know, more rectangular-shaped building and complying with the setbacks, side yard setback variance of the 10 feet on the one side, and still have room for a playground in the rear with adequate parking. We felt that this layout provided that. And the one-way circulation of the main parking area is, is safe with the 24-foot drive aisles, et cetera. So that's kind of how we determined it.
Were there other options that were looked at, positioning-wise?
We did look, go through, I think, about three concepts.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. You said you were putting in wheel stops or bollards in front of the building, because the.
Wheel stops.
Okay, because the police department memo suggested bollards.
Okay. That's, we don't have a problem making that.
Okay. Just want to be clear, please.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, I make a motion, open this witness to the public. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward to ask questions of this witness's testimony and only of his testimony given? Please do so. Say your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close this witness to the public. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
I would like to bring up our traffic engineer and planner, Brian Intandola.
Please raise your right, right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Intandola.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth.
That I will tell the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
In this proceeding.
In this proceeding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please spell your name and address, please.
Spelling of my name, Brian with an I, B.R.I.A.N., spelling of my last name, Intandola, I.N.T.I.N.D.O.L.A.
Mr. Intandola, if you could briefly give us your background as both a traffic engineer and as a planner?
As my career progressed, it started as a basically municipal-scale traffic engineer, reviewing plans and traffic reports such as we've submitted, while I was doing signal design in Union County and Esses County, Passaic County, and providing reviews for boards such as yours. I've been doing that since about 1999. Licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer. Attended NJIT where I got my masters.
And then Mike.
Move to accept. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you for that. And then with respect to planning, it just became specific as it ties to traffic. Planning became a requested discipline of our office. And so I became a planner by examination. And now I serve as a planner to Borough of Rutherford, Lynnhurst Boards, and several.
Make a motion, accept as a planner. Do I have a second?
I appreciate it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, testify as both the traffic engineer and separately as the planner.
Correct. I will not intermingle, intermingle the testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, so if I could begin, I would like to talk about traffic. So, and we worked with our office and the client to provide a site that helps parents do the drop-off. That's what I think that we're here for, that the board's evaluating. It has to be done in a safe and efficient manner, manner. Has to be consistent and easy to understand as a parent. So as the architect had said, you will park your car. You will then bring your child into the daycare. You do your drop-off, and you go back to your car and you leave. Our office has done studies that show, that usually done in about five and a half minutes. But we did a check, and I think I have an exhibit here somewhere. Tabs. Okay, so, yes. So I did an exhibit just to, to speak from this evening. So how do we know that this site will work for you?
All right. Plus, I think if I have the exhibit, and then that will be the next numbered exhibit, which is.
We have an exhibit that has, is the main header to 11 Westfield Avenue Daycare. It is undated, and it's an exhibit by my office that illustrates the components of the traffic report and a larger aerial map, which would be A4, if I'm.
Yes, A4, please.
And that would be A4. So speaking from the exhibit and generally from the traffic report, we determined that what would be the trip generation, as I'm sure you've heard, for the application at hand. So we used as the independent variable, the square footage, which is about 13,000 square foot, because it's a two-story application. And so in the morning, we would anticipate, using standard ITE or Institute of Transportation Engineers, daycare center as the, as the land use. There would be 81 to enter, 72 to exit in a single peak hour. And that would be a total of 152 trips. And then, as we worked the afternoon, there would be 73 to enter, and to exit would be 82, for 155 total trips. There's some minor trip generation for Saturday, midday, peak hour. I don't believe the applicant is purporting to, or reporting to have any Saturday hours. And based on our experience, that's for clerical staff to catch up. And also some intensive cleaning as need be, so that would generate some traffic, but not, not a lot of traffic. So, doing that, we looked at the site, we did the traffic counts in the end of May. And your, we also got input from your reviewing traffic engineer, Mr. Troutman, I believe. And we looked at the site, and I said, how does this site operate for a daycare? And we really, we, we believe that it needs to be a right-in and a right-out. Because the way Westfield Avenue is structured, to make that left-out or the left-in during rush hour, that's simultaneously to when daycares do their drop-off, or maybe a little bit earlier. We didn't want the site getting bogged down with the lefts in and the lefts out. And if you look at how Westfield Avenue is striped, years and years ago, I think it was striped for maybe three lanes of traffic, or, and then it, they put the shoulder stripe in, the county did. So it's a single lane of traffic, which shows me that the, that the throughput has been de-emphasized a little bit in terms of safety, so that you can judge a line of traffic to make your lefts in and out. So we believe that to do that, you don't have to judge it in this instance, because we are bringing to the board that we're going to do a right-in, right-out. And that way, as a parent, you come in, you can preorientate yourself. If you're, if you're from another part of town or wherever, you come in as a right, you drop your child off, and you know to make a right turn out. And then you'll have sufficient gaps in traffic for the right turn, the left turn. And you could see even like when we counted the traffic, most of the turns out of the Dunkin' Donuts across the street, they are all rights out. So you really, it's like, we're not giving up anything. We're trying to, as a practical matter, it's a right-in, right-out, and the levels of service work well. And then if we look at the exhibit, we want to see, you know, we're purporting that the, the parking would work, right? So it's a little zoomed in on the screen. So we understand, basically, it's five to seven minutes to drop your child off. But we said, what if it, what if we got bogged, bogged down for some reason, right? In that hour period, that hour period turnover. And what if we took 20 of the 37 spaces to use? And if we turned them over every 15 minutes, those 20 spaces, a slug of 20, we could turn over 81, 80 drop-offs, which is pretty close to what our peak hour is going to be. Actually, our peak hour is 81. And then if there is a, not such a conservative estimate, if we did a 10-minute parking turnover, and if we allocated 20 spaces, not all of them, not the whole 37, we could then process 140 drop-offs. And we feel that that's a comfortable number to allocate, because there will be some, you know, staff. Not all staff is there during drop-off, because we find in our experience that sometimes the office staff comes a little bit later before drop-off and works a little bit later. So there is a little off-shifting of the staff, we find, in daycare uses. We're very comfortable that we are self-contained in the drop-off by using only half, or approximately half of the 37 spaces provided. So that's what we looked at. And then we also looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking demand literature for the number of parking spaces that would be found on average for a daycare. And that works well, too, because it shows that the average parking demand is 32 vehicles for a daycare of this size. So to me, it kind of works well. And we believe the right-in, right-out is a, is a benefit, and it helps. and it helps the site work efficiently, especially with the drop-off. So that's the overview of the trip, and parking, and turnover, and how the site would work, and that is all put together in our report, as was last revised, June 30th, and that was submitted to the board.
Will the driveway apron be built on so to discourage these left-in, left-outs?
Right now, it is not, but I believe that when we bring this to the county, most likely it would be, there would be a slight angling of that to discourage those left turns. As a practical matter, as you all understand, Westfield Avenue, you really can't make left turns during the peak hour.
And stop people.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, too. And Scott and I will revisit that, should the board look favorably on the application, and we'll provide an angle that would discourage that left-out or the left-in. The driveways are already split, so it's not a stretch to do a slight angling to the site plan that we have, to discourage left turns even, even more so.
I think if the county doesn't object to it, I think that would be a good decision to-
Yeah, I think we're just building upon that, that right-in and right-out theme, so it makes sense.
You said it's anticipated the staff would be staggered. Right now, if it's not staggered, there's only 10 spots available for this turnover of drop-off or pickup, or your numbers would get skewed. Yep?
It is, yeah.
Right, so there's 37 spaces on-site, just for the exercise, I use 20 spaces to turn the spaces over. Even if I use 10 spaces, I would have 70 spaces to turn over in the peak hour. So it's, so even in that, and that would give more spaces for staff, but our experience is that not all staff is there. There's the early setup staff to receive children, and then there's the actual clerical staff, and then we're having both on this site.
I would agree with the staggering, and with 10 spots, you'd still get, you said 70?
Yeah, right, so if you look at the table, right, so if I took a 10-minute, if I took 20 spaces, and I did 10, I would have 140 spaces, divide that by two, because I'm killing the supply by half, you still would have 70 spaces to turn over on a 10-minute scenario.
10 minutes is probably generous.
Well, we find that, you know, like, unfortunately, we sit in the field and count drop-off and watch a mom take a car. Usually that, that data indicates about 5.5 minutes on average for a normal drop-off, and sometimes a caregiver will have to do, you know, like, whatever special instructions, that takes a little bit longer, so that's why I'm comfortable with the 10-minute turnover on the drop-off.
I agree, it just, it gets better, potentially can be better.
Yeah.
Anyone else on board have questions of this witness? Please, Lance.
Can you define drop-off? Are the parents actually bringing their children into the building?
Absolutely.
So they also going to be wandering upstairs? Are they, is anyone watching what they're doing? Are they just on their own?
We're getting into operations, but I'm sure if we-
Well, I only brought it up because you mentioned about traffic management, and that's more time that they would be spending in the building.
No, that, that, that 10 minutes would allow for a multi-story daycare, which is, that data incorporates it, and the 10 minutes is very conservative. And even if we use that, it would capture maybe a longer walking path to the second floor, if that's what the concern is.
Okay, thank you. And did you mention about the weekend, there's no, nothing, the building is closed on the weekends?
Pretty much closed, unless you have, like, sometimes you'll have a daycare that has a deep cleaning, and they'll set that for the weekend time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Any other questions, the board?
Can you just walk me through here, car pulls in, I see the arrow, on the drawing, there's like a little, let me not explain it, it's not, that image, just walk me through the cars coming through. They pass the parking spots on the right, where they park, and then they continue out.
Going to the site plan, 10.03, and then, come back to me.
I'm looking at page four. Yeah, that one right there.
That work?
Yeah, so right above where you have on proposed parking lot, 38 spaces?
Yes.
That little curvature?
Yes.
Is that something cars are going to go around? What is that?
So there's an island?
Yeah.
That's so, because the site is like a trapezoid, and we are trying to maintain the 24-foot aisles, that's why that's like that. It could, we could collapse that in, but we liked how it brings you into the site a little bit before you make a decision to drop off. But that is like that mushroom-looking-
Yeah.
That is curbed, like, a center island that we're keeping in.
And that's not too tight to those spots there? Seems very close.
No, 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 they're all, if you have, if you have an 18-by-24 space-
Right.
It's standard parking-
Okay.
Who's that?
Sorry.
Just identify yourself.
Scott Lovrich, speaking site engineer. You're referencing what looks like the, I think what you're referencing is survey text, survey line work that's going to be demolished. It's a little grayer, right by the car lot that says proposed parking lot, 35, yes. That's, that's going to be removed, that's just there for informational purposes, that's part of the existing-
Okay.
-be removed, yes. So it's clear through there.
So what, so they're going to drive, park, drive past those spots on the right, and then they'll be forced to go back to the left, and then-
And back out, correct.
And there's a walkway for the parents?
That's right.
You said, on like the, the right corner of the building?
Yep, so you, you would cross the aisle?
Okay.
You can navigate through the, the walkways we have.
Now, is there a walkway for them on the front side of the parking spot, along the street side?
No, that's just lawn, lawn.
Okay. So they'll be able to get to their cars, but they'll actually still pretty much be in the line of traffic of cars coming in?
Yeah, it's, it's a dead end, so there's only, you know, there's less traffic to, to navigate.
Right. Okay.
Anyone from the board have any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, I make a motion-
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. I want to understand this offer that you made about the left-in and left-out to revisit. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Well, there is, it's a right-in, right-out.
I'm sorry, yes, but you said that the, that would be revisited somehow?
No, what we, what one of the board members suggested is that when we bring this to the county, and for, if we're fortunate enough for resolution compliance from this board, we would see if we could angle, or discouraged by angling the one way in, because we have a bifurcated driveway, it's split, and it seems, doesn't seem to be a, a huge engineering fee to angle them a little bit to encourage the right-in and to encourage the right-out.
So what is it that you're asking of the board on that particular issue?
Uh, no, I don't have an ask, it's a recommendation of one of the board members.
What are you agreeing to?
Excuse me?
What are you agreeing to?
I'm agreeing to the, we're proposing, we're unilaterally proposing before this board a right-in, right-out, because we knew that was a non-starter. That's all we're offering.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment on that. Are we going to have that cleared with the fire department, because they have to be boundable curbs?
Yeah, whatever, whatever we propose, we would have it vetted by all your agencies as, as needed.
Okay.
Seeing no additional questions, I'd like, I'll make a motion to open this witness to the public. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to come forward and ask questions of this witness's testimony regarding traffic? Please do so, say your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close this to the public. Second, okay, motion second. Thank you, Mike and Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one additional thing, you've reviewed Mr. Troutman's report, you, you alluded to that in your testimony. Are you meeting all of his comments?
Yes, all of them were very constructive, and that's what concluded, that we really should provide, this is a right-in, right-out.
Thank you. Well, if, if, who's your next witness?
So-
Hopefully somebody that will have an operational background.
So we can move to the operational, or I can have Mr. Intendola stay and do planning?
No, I, I think you want to have the operational foundation in.
Then I would like to bring up Keri DeVogue, to give us an explanation of the operational.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Keri DeVogue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will tell the truth.
I will tell the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
In this proceeding.
In this proceeding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please state your name, spell it, and your business address.
Okay, so it's Keri, K-E-R-R-Y, last name DeVogue, D-E-V as in Victor, O-O-G as in good, D as in Delta. Business address is 300 Route 27, Kendall Park, that would be our sapling school in Kendall Park. I have a residential address. Sorry.
Mr. DeVogue, can you just explain your position within the entity that is DISHA Management?
I am the, I will be the, I am currently the regional manager, I overlook Kendall Park, the sapling school in Kendall Park, and I overlook the sapling school in Fairlon. I've been with the sapling company since August of 2020.
And can you just give a brief overview of how you anticipate seeing this site operate on a day-to-day basis?
I would expect it to run similar to our other two schools, that it would open approximately 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning, and go to about 6:00 or 6:30 in the evening, with the bulk of parents coming typically between 8:00 and 5:00, a quarter to 8:00 and 5:15 maybe. Usually you have indeed your infants and toddlers downstairs, and you have your preschool and pre-kers upstairs, so your threes and two-and-a-haves and older upstairs. Parents usually typically come in, they clock themselves in, they, they open the door themselves, they get a code, they're greeted by administration in the morning, usually it's myself or someone else at the desk, and they proceed to bring their child to what we call an opening classroom. They, usually the morning, it's a general drop-off population, and with the exception of infants, if an infant is dropped off, they're dropped off in the infant room, but anyone over the age of one is dropped off in a general population room for the first half hour, 45 minutes, until you understand your, your population. So those don't go upstairs right away, they actually stay down, so that's how you kind of cut down on your drop-off times, because you take all of their things down, down on the bottom floor. And then the teachers come in and they retrieve their children from the drop-off room, and then they take them upstairs with their things. And if they're on the bottom floor, then they stay in on the bottom floor. In the evening, when they pick up, they're going to go directly to their classrooms and pick up their children, and then the teacher usually has all of their bags and things packed and prepared to go, to make sure that drop-off, pickup is as expedited as possible. The only time you really get a, a parent to stop by and chat is if they have to ask a specific question, or if the teacher has a, you know, a quick anecdote they want to talk to their teacher about, bring up a concern, maybe they have an accident report, maybe they got a boo-boo on the playground, they had to sign, but it's usually pretty in and out.
I'm sorry, real quick, what's the name, the two other, you want to come fast?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Sapling School?
Sapling?
Sapling, S-A-P-L-I-N-G.
Okay, and this is proposed to be the same as those other two? Okay, thank you.
Can you just give a brief overview of how many teachers and children generally are on-site at any one time?
Typically, you have between 14 and 17 at one time, roughly speaking, but it's-
14 or 17 what?
Staff members.
Teachers.
Teachers, that's right, yes, yeah.
Staff.
Including administration, yes. And it's a staggered shift, so usually you have what we call openers, sometimes those are 6:30 to 9:00 AM people, and then you have your full-timers that are typically 8:00 to 5:00, and then you have closers, which are sometimes 3:00 to 6:00, 6:00 or 6:30, depending on your, your closing time. So there's three primary shifts of teachers that come and go throughout the day. Admin, usually there's a morning admin and an evening admin, unless you have a workaholic admin, but usually they'll do the opening shift, which is usually 6:30 to about 3:00, 4:00 o'clock, and then you'll have the closing admin, which is usually 9:00 to 6:00.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Could you, first of all, you're licensed by the Office of Licensing Department of Children and Families, correct?
That is correct.
And that's a state agency?
That is correct.
Could you describe what the licensing process for this type of facility entails?
So, yes, so when, from opening, so prior to opening, when you get your certificate of occupancy, and you tell the state, I am ready to open, you have to already submit preliminary plans, because you have to be given a license number, potentially to, with your intentions to open a child care center. Once you get it, they, you get a schema of what needs to be taken care of under licensing, so you need to, floor plans, you need egress, you need to have all the safety things properly in place. Then the licenser comes out before you're even open, and then they go through and they walk through the facility with you, they walk, they walk through your, your files to make sure that the staff you have prepped to come, that the admin you have prepped to come, meet all the credentials that they require, meaning are they CPR certified, do they have a bachelor's degree if you're an admin, do, you know, you're making sure you have an infant teacher in place right at the beginning, and an older, so you have to touch all the variables. But then they have to go through the physical equipment to make sure that that's all there. They have to go through your fire and see all your, like, your fire safety and your sprinklers that have been passed, so they have to see all of your, your inspection reports. They have to make sure that, what else do they do? My licenser was just there yesterday. They go through to make sure that your teachers have been trained properly on the basics, health and safety, mandated reporting, so that's what the licenser does. They make sure that everything that they have in their licensing book is up to code at that moment that they give you, to issue a license to open. Once they issue your license to open, that's not the end of the process, they come, they can periodically come back whenever they want. They typically come back on a new center, an opening center, I would say probably about a half a dozen times in the first year, just to make sure that you are making, everything is good, that if you had staff turnover, that you've hired credentialed staff, that if you had some type of issue, that they've taken care of it there. But the licenser is there as the overseer of me, of the admin, to make sure I am properly managing the building according to their credentials.
Do you require a license?
Do I require a license?
You're, as an administrator, are you required to have a license?
You require, you have a credentials, you have to have a bachelor's degree, so I have a bachelor's degree in sociology and psychology. I'm actually just returned to school, got to get my masters in early childhood.
Any other staff required to have a state license?
They're not required to have a state license at the, the private childcare letter, level, if you have a UPK classroom, they do need a CDA or a, or a teaching degree, if you have a UPK, universal preschool in your, within your building. But to be a lead teacher under Grow NJ Kids, you have to have a bachelor's degree, and you have to have, I mean, so most of our teachers have a CDA, so they'll accept a CDA, which is a Child Development Associate's degree. And then your lead, your, your assistant teachers can have a high school diploma, they can, but you encourage them to go through the CDA process, because it's physically concentrated on the ECE population, early childhood education population.
Now, does the, you spoke of a manual, does the Office of Licensing issue that manual?
Yes, they do.
And is it part of the New Jersey Administrative Code as, as regulations or law, or is that something that is unique to that, to that agency?
I mean, it's, it's given out by the State of New Jersey and the Office of Licensing, so everything that's in there is, in order to be a licensed childcare center in the state of New Jersey, you must abide by everything that's in that manual.
So you have to not only conform with the Uniform Construction Code, the FAR Code, things of that nature, but also this separate set of licensing standards?
Hundred percent, yes, sir, that is correct.
Good, thank you.
Will food be prepared on-site or brought on?
Let me just defer, that I believe it's being prepared on-site, correct? We will have a full working kitchen on, in the school, yes.
At what point do you file with the DEP, NJDEP, for your, with a preliminary assessment to get approval from them?
You have to do that prior, I'm sorry, I'm just checking with-
That's fine, that's fine.
You have to do that prior to even coming to this stage. It has to be approved to site before we can even ask the state to consider it as a childcare center. So that's like pre, pre, pre-stages, if I'm not overstepping my language here. That's all been taken care of, because we wouldn't be here if it wasn't approved already by DEP.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just follow up on that. Paul Sarkson, S-A-S-A-K-S-O-N. Paul Sarkson, S-A-S-A-K-S-O-N issued a, a letter to Arvin Patel on May one, 2025 regarding the Phase One environmental study that was done and the things that have to be tested for. Are you saying this letter has been complied with or will be complied with?
Don't have, I personally do not have that answer.
Yeah, we agree to comply, it is in the process of complying with all of the requirements under the Phase One letter.
Okay, and all of these items detailed on page two will be, for example, response, action, outcome letter, you will obtain that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on board have any questions of this witness?
I apologize if I missed it. When the, when the parents bring their, their children into the school, will there be somebody to greet them, to direct them where to go, or?
Yes.
And after all the children are dropped off, the doors will be locked?
The doors are locked at all times. The parents get a code to enter the building, so that's how they, we call it buzz themselves in, so they enter their code, the door buzzes, there, it releases, and you're allowed to. And our, our SOP is that you don't hold the door open for the family behind you, even if it's your friend and you know them. And that's kind of something that I'm a big stickler on, and my parents understand when you go through the process that we don't hold the door open because it's a safety feature, so you don't, so, but they, but the doors are locked at all times, in terms of you can't get into the building, you can obviously always egress the building, but you can't get in unless you have a code. And the doors around the perimeters are all locked from the outside. Again, egress is permissible, but you can't get inside, and they'll alarm when they go open.
Okay, and then at the end of the day, when the parents, they use their code to come in, there's no need, they just know where to go, there's nobody, it needs to be down there at the front entrance to direct them?
Well, there's always somebody at the front entrance, that's, that's a requirement, that's a requirement from, from our, again, our standard operating procedure, so the director's office and the assistant director are always there at the front, yeah.
That was my concern, that was my concern, that somebody is there to watch the front door?
Yes, because inevitably you're not going to remember your code, so you're going to need to be let in anyway, so, yeah, and if the delivery guy comes in, they don't have code, so there's got to be somebody there at all times, correct?
Very good, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
How long do you think it'll be before you become operational?
I, if everything in my world goes well, I would hope September of 2026 would be our opening, that, you know, maybe a soft opening in August, but I, that's my hopeful non-layman's understanding of construction, I would hope a year.
And that includes all, all approvals, all constructions, and all licensing?
Fingers crossed, I would hope so, yeah, I mean, if there's some-
No, I just want to have, you're not going to be held to that, it's just-
Okay, good.
Have a, an understanding of what the expectation is, that this is not going to happen next month?
No.
You're talking at a year and a quarter or more.
I would, that would be a safe bet for me, yes.
Thank you.
How many sapling schools are there in New Jersey?
This'll be, this will, there's two currently, there's one in Kendall Park, New Jersey, in South Brunswick, and then there's one in Fairlon, so this'll be the third one in New Jersey.
How long they been around?
Thirteen years, maybe more in our fourteenth year.
I mean, I'm just establishing, you have a routine, this is a regular routine that you're used to doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just New Jersey you guys are based in, or?
We have a school in Michigan, in, in Chicago, Grayslake.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have questions, comments? Seeing none, I make a motion to open this witness up to the public, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to come forward regarding the testimony of this witness, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close this to the public, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor?
At this time, I would like to bring Brian Intandola back to the podium to discuss the planning elements of this project.
Thank you, counsel. Now, this is Brian Intandola, and we're going to talk about the C variances that have been identified during this process. So the C variances that were identified are dimensional variances or having improvements in the front yard specifically in the context of Plymouth to the back. A fairly unique situation, so we could plead to you as a C one, but I think the C two criteria is probably more appropriate, it's somewhere in between. And then in that instance, you know, are we harming your master plan or the intent of the zone? And in reading Mr. Ritchie's 2023 Master Plan Reexam, it's interesting that the existing use, the funeral home use is now, has been outzoned, it's an existing non-conforming use, which is interesting to me. So if any improvements were to be done there, I believe would have to go to the zoning board, but this is a conforming use because child care centers are called out and is permitted in the downtown village plan. And then, so getting to the C two criteria is that, you know, are, are the purposes of your master plan advanced, and is it causing any harm to your master plan? And I would say that, given the one that we are basically not invading the residential area, that's because that's in the zone is the R one hundred zone, which is your, which are ten thousand square foot lots, which are substantial lots, and they have substantial setbacks, specifically the playground equipment goes into the apparent front yard with respect to the cul-de-sac, and we understand that, and I believe that that's C two, or C two variance can be granted, and also specific to what is being put there, right? So the daycare is not open during the weekend so that the noise that could be associated with a playground is not going to happen on a weekend when people are enjoying their homes and their residential use. There are restrictions, heat restrictions, you know, that the, that the state has for that, so on super hot days, they most likely won't be out there because that's managed. The number of children per the square foot of playground area is also managed, so it's not like it's a free-form or open playground as it would be like a municipal facility. So given that, I think it's self-mitigating in that it's within the hours of business, and it's not on the weekends. So I think you can grant that C two variance for both the front yard setback generally and for the incursion of the equipment into the front yard setback. So I don't want to belabor that, but I think that, underlying that, we are an inherently beneficial use, we're not belaboring that, I think it's self-evident that this would be in a facility that's needed. And if you look at the two oh two, two oh two three master plan redevelopment, you've had some successful redevelopment projects that included multifamily residential, and in that, which is great for Clark, your population actually increased about seven percent. So it's like, it seems to be that there is also need for the daycare if your population is rebounding and growing again, you know, due to the efforts of the mayor and council and the planning board and your planner. So I think this is just, this use is just an acknowledgement of that success, and we hope that you can see your way to granting that C two variance for the occupation of the equipment in the front yard and also for the, the building line in the front yard. So that's, and I, I think that's, and also there was a variance for the six-foot fence, based on my drive-by there and, you know, doing the traffic counts, there is a six-foot solid fence there, some parts of it are four, and we're just going to make it a consistent six-foot across, so that I think that can be also granted if, should the board consider it. So that's, that's basically the planning testimony I'd like to put on the record.
The request is also to have an opaque as opposed to a see-through fence?
Well, you know, I think that the opaque fence that's there now, it's, I don't know how long it's been there, to me it looks like it's a ten-year-old or fifteen-year-old fence, should the board consider it, I think that the opacity or opaqueness should stay because then the, the business of the daycare is not, is buffering into the residential area. I don't think it needs to be open. And the ancillary benefit of that is that when you look through from the residential area, you could see through to Westfield Avenue, so you provide that visual screen as well. So I think that's a side benefit of providing a, a solid fence.
You also use the phrase inherently beneficial, that's more appropriate for a use variance than the Board of Adjustment, not the Planning Board, but why don't you explain that concept of what is an inherently beneficial use?
As, as you've picked up, I'm not belaboring inherently.
Yes, and I understand, but it's a concept the board is not familiar with, so.
So that, you know, the, and this, the municipal land use law, as it has evolved through court cases, recognizes there are certain uses that are inherently beneficial to the community, and there's a list of them, and there are proofs to provide that are that the, the site can function well onsite from like a traffic and operational perspective, and that it's interfaced with the driveway and the street also works in a safe manner. You may or may not have to consider the parking supply, depending on how rigorous your ordinance is, if it's not in your ordinance, then the parking supply is not considered or the criteria for inherently beneficial use. That's like a, that's like a general overview of that, but we're not relying on that.
Mr. Ritchie's letter of April ten, 2025, you're, you will or have complied with all those comments, except for the ones regarding the LED sign?
Yes, the LED sign has been eliminated.
Yes. I have nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else on board have questions to the planner?
This might be for the operation, how many children are allowed on the playground area at one time? I know you referenced that.
I don't have the, I don't have the final playground equipment layout, but it's not a hundred and ninety-eight children, I could say that, you know, it's, it has to be parceled out so that there's enough supervision and it's a common sense approach.
Okay.
If anybody has any-
Could you, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Sure.
Just identify yourself again.
Keri DeVogue, so I can answer that. On any given state of Office of Licensing, you're only allowed one classroom per, per playground, so if you have your playground as divided infants and toddlers, preschool, pre-k, you can have one infant toddler class out, which is approximately twelve to eighteen children, and on the, the older side, which is preschool, pre-k, a classroom can hold up to twenty, maybe twenty-four if your capacity for it, so at one time, there could be twenty to twenty-four children on the preschool side. So on any given forty-five minutes of play, because you're a morning session and an afternoon session, depending on the weather, there would be, there could be, what is it, twenty and thirty-five children outside occupying either, both playgrounds. But if it's, maybe the infants aren't going out today and only the preschoolers are, so maybe it's only going to be twenty at that time. And playground time is anywhere between thirty and forty-five minutes per session, per class.
Quick questions, how many, how many kids per, how many kids in a classroom, maximum, minimum?
Depending on what's work, I, I don't have the exact capacity numbers for our class, so I would say between infants and toddlers, between twelve and eighteen.
Okay.
Which is your infants till about two, two and a half, and then your preschool, pre-k, which is two and a half to about five, four or five. You're going to say there's going to be twenty, if you have a full classroom.
One teacher per classroom, or is there any?
No ratios, so zero to, you're going to testify?
I know, you're not on legal.
So, yeah, zero to, infants are going to be a one to four ratio, one teacher to every four children.
Okay.
Once they turn eighteen months, it's going to be one teacher to every six children. Once they turn two and a half, it's going to be one teacher to every ten children, and once they turn four, it's one teacher to every twelve children.
Okay, and then you, do you have a, I know this is really reaching, but is there a policy about weather outside, being outside and inside?
Hundred percent, yes, so we use the thirty-five to ninety-five scale, so they can go out as cold as thirty-five and as hot as ninety-five, but you have to take into consideration wind chill and heat index. If it exceeds that with that, then they're not allowed outside.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions of this witness? No, that witness. Thank you.
I have no further testimony with respect to planning unless you have some questions.
Seeing no questions to the planner, I make a motion to open this up to the public for the planner's testimony, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward regarding a testimony given by the planner, please do so, state your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close this to the public, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other witnesses?
I have no further witnesses. I would, just for one point of clarification, when we were going over the exhibits, A one was the floor plan, A two is the elevations, A three is the site plan. The engineer showed a separate document for a lighting plan, but that didn't get documented, and then you made the traffic exhibit A four, so we can make the lighting, lighting plan A five, if that works.
Well, just, it's part of the site plan, correct?
It technically is a separate page because it comes from an earlier site plan.
I'll just suggest do it as A three A, only to keep it in the order of the testimony.
That's fine.
Thank you for picking that up.
Having no other witnesses, I make a motion to open this up to the public, do I have any questions regarding this application, do I have a second? Thank you, Lance. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to come forward, have any comments regarding this application, please do so, state your name and address.
Hello, John Grease, from Clark. I just, you know, there's actually quite a bit to like about this, I just wanted the board to consider, you know, we're getting something new, but I just wanted to just consider the things that we're losing and some of the impact that it might have in the downtown village. You know, this is one of the more historic buildings, if not, you know, one of the most historic buildings in the, the town, and, you know, preserving our past is important, and the architecture, the charm and the character of that building is something that is going to be irreplaceable with the modern things that they're doing there, and it doesn't seem like they put effort into trying to preserve the old building. And I guess, you know, downtown village, a business district they were trying to build, having a historic building is actually valuable and can increase the wealth of those types of districts, and I just like you guys to take that into consideration in your, your determination. I understand that there's a lot to like about this, and, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I just wanted to bring that up, that we are losing an important piece of our history, and I think that's important, and it would be great if we could find some way to preserve that, though I understand there's a lot of factors involved here, and, you know, it is private property and people can do what they want as long as they comply, but it does have public value, and I just wanted the board to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward? Seeing no one, I make a motion to close this to the public, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Now close to the public. Counselor, would you like a closing statement?
Yes, just to quickly respond, the building, while yes, it is old, has not actually been designated as a historic area, and then additionally, the fact that it was previously a funeral parlor makes it a little difficult to repurpose the building, so that would be part of the reason why we are proposing to demolish and rebuild a new building as opposed to retrofit or convert the building that currently exists. But at this time, I would just like to reiterate that this is a child care center with exclusively C variances, and we have agreed to all of the conditions that this board has suggested, including the right-in, right-out curbing to make sure that it is both FAR, consistent with the FIRE Code, and consistent with trying to alleviate any risk of left-hand turns, and the, as Brian had stated, the opaque fence is already there, and we also see it as a benefit for the purpose of screening as well, both for the children themselves and for the neighborhood itself. But with that, I would just like to thank the board for their time this evening and request a positive vote.
Thank you, counselor. Does the board have any discussion or comments they'd like to make?
Mr. Chair, if I could just summarize briefly what the conditions are, the first condition would be, while a CO- The first condition would be, while a CO would be issued before the license is issued by the Office of Licensing of the Department of Child, of Children and Families, they could not open without that license. It doesn't need to be said, I think, but I just want to make sure that that is a condition of the board, that they have to have a license, they may be able to get a CO, but not open. With respect to a few other conditions, that the applicant will pay the affordable housing, non-residential fee, as has been stated, comply with all of the various review reports, including engineer, planning, fire, police, and traffic, that there is a pending application before the county, and that that will be another subject too. A condition is that a bench, a suitable bench appropriately located in a similar style to those before, at the CVS facility, instead of concrete bumpers, bollards, the right-in and right-out that has been mentioned, with amenable curbs for the fire department, the letter of the environmental consultant, Paul SAKSON, dated May 1, 2025, and then the standard terms and conditions that are typical of the board resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No further comments or questions?
I have one comment.
Yes.
About adding traffic control signage to the driveways.
Yes, NFLU is our traffic expert.
Jay Troutman, McDonough and Ray, Township Traffic Consultant. I noticed on the revised plans, they didn't add any traffic control signage to the plan, so I would like to see that signage added and review that before it goes to construction, and specifically on that exit driveway, I'd like to see stop signs posted, and on the back of the signs, do not enter signs posted, so people don't get confused and come in through the exit driveway.
Good point. Counselor, is that-
That is not a problem. We can absolutely oblige with that.
Our counselor, did you hear that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
I would like to acknowledge, and I did ask earlier on if this had been considered for reuse, I would have liked to have heard that they had. I could see the difficulty of trying to, I've been in there unfortunately for funerals, I see the difficulty of trying to put 200-plus people into that structure and to function the way it was. Would it be out of line to ask for some sort of a plaque regarding the history of that site or to be put up somewhere?
You can certainly ask, and-
That be acceptable?
A plaque acknowledging the historical significance of the building to the town, not necessarily that it is on the National Register or the State Register, but acknowledging that this has a role in the town, in the, in the role of the municipality, it's an older structure, that, that kind of thing, the wording of that can be agreed upon between either yourself and myself or administratively, so if that's a condition, that's acceptable. I think that's what you're trying to get at, Mr. Chair.
The bench.
Sure. On the bench or next to the bench or on the building?
Either one.
Wherever.
Okay.
The applicant has no issue with that as a condition.
I would like a motion to accept this application with the conditions that counselor has noted and we've discussed this evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. A roll call vote?
I did, yes. Mayor Albinis? Yes. Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Scheinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Perkato?
Yes.
Mr. Roncio?
Yes.
Mr. Gribb?
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you so much.
All right, continuing on, congratulations. I'd like to open, I make a motion to open this session to the public to come forward and have any discussions they may wish.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to come forward to address this board regarding any issues? Please do so. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close this to the public, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any new business? No? Any old business? I just would like to make one comment, I finally drove by the new Starbucks heading towards Target, and somebody made a left turn in from Westfield Avenue, so signage doesn't seem to stop people. Our next meeting is August 2nd, August 7th, September 4th, followed by October 2nd. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1772.11]